Calling the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission Wednesday, May 15th, 2013 in the council chambers. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card and file it with the secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission and not to the audience. While Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and obey orders of the Chair. It's roll call.
Crabtree, Merk, Foster.
Here.
Becker.
Here.
Nolan.
Here.
Nicklin.
Here. I'd like Commissioner Becker to do the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Public communications. The public communication item is for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business. Other than scheduled agenda items, matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will be generally referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action or non-agenditized items can be taken at this meeting. Do you open any public communication? Consent items. The consent calendar is approved by roll call on one motion. Should any member of the commission wish to discuss or disapprove an item, it may be removed from the consent calendar and considered as separate items. Approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second the minutes. Roll call. Foster.
Yes.
Becker.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Nicklin.
Yes.
The Municipal Advisory Council Planning Commission liaison, I don't see our representative here this evening. The next MAC meeting is on May 20th and I will be attending. It's next Monday. Disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts.
I'm familiar with both sites.
I'm familiar with both sites.
I've visited both sites.
I've visited both sites too. So we'll move on to public hearing items. Item two. Design review permit, DRP 13-03, for an addition to a two-story element to an existing two-story residence at 1116 Foothill Road. Assesses parcel number 0200-021-150. The applicant is Alan Camp. Your staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, commissioners, members of the audience. This is a public hearing for a relatively minor project, but it does involve a two-story addition, and that's why it's coming before the Planning Commission this evening. It involves a 296-square-foot two-story addition to an existing residence located at the northeast corner of Foothill Road and Vista Hermosa Road. The owner is the Camp Family Trust, and Mr. Camp, Mr. Alan Camp, is here to address any questions of the commission this evening. He was assisted in the application by Charles Collins of Bob Easton Architects, and Mr. Collins is not here tonight, so Mr. Camp will be addressing any questions. The parcel is developed with a single-family residence that's approximately 5,500 square feet in size, with additionally a detached garage of approximately 879 square feet. The subject parcel is surrounded by other single-family residential uses, and a previous addition was approved by the Planning Commission most recently, the most recent addition was approved in October of 2002, which is Architectural Review 0216. And some of those additions in that approval were built and some were not, and so the applicant would like to make additional additions and has come in for the required permits. The residence was originally built in 1923 by an undetermined architect, and because of the age of the structure, a preliminary historical resources evaluation was conducted and determined that the existing dwelling was not eligible for inclusion in the historical registry or a candidate for historical designation, primarily because of previous alterations that were done both in 1990 and then in the period between 2001 and 2002. So this is not a significant historic resource per sequa, and therefore, the evaluation prepared for it determined that this would not result in any impacts to a significant historic resource. The proposed project consists of additions of 134 square feet to the main floor and 162 square feet to the upper floor, and the upper floor addition is directly above the main floor addition. The exterior winding window, rather, from the main floor will be reused in the addition. New exterior materials and colors will match the existing exterior materials and colors. The maximum height would remain the approximately 24 feet at the roof ridge, and roof materials would match the existing terracotta tile. A pergola would also need to be demolished during the project and then would be reconstructed after the addition was constructed. The project, as proposed, is in compliance with the development standards specified in the city's municipal code. The proposed project meets all setback, lot coverage, height limit, and parking requirements for the single-family residential R-01 zoning district. The proposed additions are on the easterly elevation, which is the rear of the property, and would have a rear yard setback of approximately 90 feet. So this is still very far from the next property, the adjacent property. The front yard setback would remain unchanged at approximately 187 feet, and the side yard setbacks would remain unchanged at approximately 108 feet and 21 feet, respectively. I think I failed to mention the size of the property. It's almost two acres. So this is one single-family residence on a really large parcel, and the residence is kind of set, you know, fairly square in the middle of the property, or at least it has, it maintains very good setbacks. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission find that the proposed additions are compatible with the existing residence and surrounding residences, as the design and color palette are consistent with the existing dwelling and other homes in the neighborhood. And staff has prepared a resolution for approval, which is Attachment A to your staff report, and that includes as exhibits the findings and the conditions of approval. I also want to note that the project qualifies for a Class 1 categorical exemption from environmental review, and Class 1 exemptions include minor alterations and additions to existing structures, which is what this project constitutes. The project plans are included in Attachment B, and behind me is a rendering of the project, and if the commission, any of the commissioners want to come up and take a closer look, you're welcome to. You were distributed the project plans, both as 11-by-17 versions and a full-size set. So with that, there aren't any special conditions of approval to bring your attention. It's a really straightforward project. It's before you because of the two-story element, and that's all I have for the staff report.
Any questions of staff, commissioners? Open the public hearing. Motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Thank you. I don't think the applicant wants to, he did nothing to say.
They have no further questions?
Thank you.
Well, then, I think it's a real, like you suggested, Rob, it's a very straightforward project. Everything's in keeping with the existing, it's a beautiful home, and I know this architect, he pays attention to detail, and I'm seeing it here. I think it's going to be a nice improvement. I don't see any reason why not to go forward with it.
I can just echo what you said, the same thing. It's a beautiful project and an existing beautiful home, too, and so it's been really tastefully, the new design done very well.
I'll make a motion that we approve PC Resolution Number 13-08. Thank you. Approving Design Review Permit, DRP 13-03, subject to the findings of approval and conditions of approval.
I'll second it.
Ready for roll call? Foster.
Yes.
Becker.
Yep.
Nolan.
Yes.
Nicklin.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, Mr. Chair, if I may, well, thank you and congratulations, Mr. Camp. We'll be in touch, we'll send an action letter out to you with the signed resolution, all the conditions of approval, and you'll be off and running into the building division. I just, I want to touch upon the reason why these projects come to you, and in this particular case, there is a 90-foot separation from the two-story addition and the adjacent property, and it was in the rear of the property. But there are many situations where you don't have that big of a setback, and two-story additions can create view impacts, it can create privacy concerns with adjacent neighbors, and that's why our zoning code really is very stringent on bringing these projects forward for design review. In this case, we had a really nice project with very professionally-prepared plans, and it sailed right through, but that's not always the case. So I realize that you're all kind of saying, well, why did this come to us tonight? But that's, I think you have an understanding why it did.
Very good.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our third public hearing item. That's Design Review Permit, DRP 211, and Conditional Use Permit, CUP 12-05, for modification to CUP 78-01, for remodel of two buildings and a trash enclosure addition at 108 West Eucalyptus Street. Property owner, Helene Gobetz, is that correct? Sorry, yes, thank you. An applicant, Nicholas Otway. Staff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This is another public hearing. It's to consider minor modifications to an existing conditional use permit for the Manor of Ojai, which is an assisted living facility for elderly clients, and it is located at 108 West Eucalyptus Street. Mr. Otway is prepared to address any questions from the commission, but I don't think he feels the need to give a separate presentation. It's, again, another straightforward project. The main intent of this was to address a fire inspection violation, and in addressing that, we realized it was a very old permit that controlled the property that was originally approved in 1973, or in '72, rather, and the, one of the issues that staff noted in going through the files was that the original CUP applied not only to the Manor of Ojai, but also to the adjacent three apartment buildings that used to be MIMs, MIMs Manor, is it? MIMs Manor? And that's now under separate ownership, it's no longer associated with the Manor at Ojai, so it was really not only the opportunity, but the obligation to really clarify that and take those uses off the CUP. So that's one of the main objectives of the modification of the CUP. And then, other than that, it's really the addition of a firewall within the main facility that the fire department noted was needed, and then reverting some uses that seem to have some residential components to non-residential uses for an accessory building in the rear. And then the third component was adding a trash enclosure area at a fixed location that, because, as we found out in our inspection, the trash container, there was no set area in it, it just kind of floated around the parking lot and was not screened. So, you know, this is really a minor project to clean up a few of the items and to clarify the coverage of the conditional use permit. So with that brief introduction, I'll just get, just for the record, just have a few specifics in the staff report here. The subject property is approximately 3,000 square feet, or 30,000 square feet in size, with the assisted living facility of about 10,464 square feet that contains 22 residential suites, an activity room, a kitchen, a dining area. And the site also includes this approximately 1,200-square-foot accessory structure that's used for employee training and storage. There's existing landscaping on the property, it consists of mature ornamental plants and grasses, there's agapanthus, bird of paradise, and turf grass, and some others. There are three mature coastlive oak trees on the property, as well as two additional coastlive oaks located along the street frontages. The subject property is bound to the northeast and west by residential development, which is both single-family and multifamily residential uses. And then the area south of the project street is developed as a mixed use and is in the VMU zoning district. In approximately 2000, the parcels in the apartment buildings at 501, 503, and 505 North Ventura Street were separated from the assisted living facility, and the apartments reverted to a non-restricted residential uses. It was no longer restricted by age. And as I mentioned earlier, these apartments are now under separate ownership, so we're taking that out of the CUP in your action tonight. The applicant is requesting approval of a Design Review Permit that relates to the new trash enclosure and a modification to the CUP to document the existing structures and uses, as well as to separate the apartment buildings from the Manor of Ojai operations. And so, in summary, this new conditional use permit will be current, and it will reflect the current daily operations and uses associated with the Manor of Ojai. I mentioned already that there is an annual fire department inspection. This was back in September of 2012, and some residential uses were noted in the accessory structure. The application is to revert those to storage uses. And as far as zoning consistency and zoning ordinance compliance, this was a facility that was developed several years ago before the current R2 zoning districts were in place, so it doesn't meet all the existing R2 zoning ordinances, but it is a legal, non-conforming use that was granted by that original CUP. So there's a slight deficiency in lot coverage. The lot coverage is approximately 39% of the property, and the R2 zoning district's allowable lot coverage is 35. But again, that lot coverage was approved as part of CUP 7310, and then there's no new increase in lot coverage in the application, and actually, they're going to be reducing lot coverage slightly because there's an existing storage shed that is to the east of the main facility, and that's proposed for demolition. So you'll actually have a net decrease in lot coverage. The project includes the construction of the new trash enclosure, approximately 60 square feet, and as I mentioned earlier, currently, that's not, the trash is not screened from public view and lacks a designated area, and so that designated area is provided in here. The proposed trash enclosure will be of concrete masonry unit construction to match the existing retaining walls on site, and includes a trellis or a roof feature above the enclosure area to shield the trash container from the elements and to provide an aesthetic enhancement of that structure. The project also qualifies for a Class 1 categorical exemption from environmental review, and staff does recommend approval of the project. I think the applicant and the owner are anxious to satisfy the fire department and have that issue closed, and this is what, this is the first major step in that. I do want to note a few minor issues with the application, and these are really minor, and most of them have been addressed with conditions of approval. There's a small error on the east elevation, it's missing a window, so when the building plan set comes in, you'll want to have revised plans that show the missing window, and Nick, I'm sure you can check that out and know exactly what I'm talking about. But if any of the commissioners have questions, I can go over that in more detail. The existing lighting may require better shielding if it's not in compliance with our current lighting requirements. Anytime you have a new CUP or a revision to a CUP, it's an opportunity to look at lighting and landscaping and other things. We do have a condition of approval that's added, it's Condition of Approval Number 7, which basically ensures that the lighting is compliant with our existing development standards. The roof style and the material for the trash enclosure, it's not depicted or described on the plans, as far as I can tell, and Nick, you may want to correct me if I'm wrong on this, but again, to address that, we just have a condition of approval that says, in your final construction plans, show us and tell us what the roof will look like, what the slope of the roof is, if it's sloped, what the roof material will be. And then finally, we are including, as Condition of Approval Number 10, a deed restriction that would be recorded to ensure that residential uses in the accessory building are not installed. And I talked to, I actually had a discussion with Sherri about whether this deed restriction was actually needed, because the fire department is going to be coming in on an annual basis doing an inspection anyway. But our standard practice for accessory structures, especially if there's a question on whether there's a potential for some residential use in there, we do like to include the deed restriction. Just makes it clear for not only the current owner, but any future owner, that that's not to be used as a residential use. So that's it, very, I think, straightforward conditions of approval, they were provided in advance to the applicant, and I don't believe either the owner or the applicant had any issues with the conditions of approval, but again, if I'm incorrect, then please address the commission. And with that, I will wrap up the staff report.
Any questions for staff?
One question, Rob. What's the CUP as granted? Is it in perpetuity, or is there a time limitation on it?
It does run with the land, and you can have conditions of approval requiring periodic review or check-in on how the operations are going. We didn't feel that it was necessary for this particular project.
Would the applicant like to say anything?
Open the public hearing?
I'll open the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We need a motion.
Any discussion?
Although, if we can do that, I'm all for it.
Well, once again, I think it's fairly straightforward, and I think, you know, the few missing items that you said would be covered when they come in for their building permit, so I personally feel okay to move forward with it.
I agree.
I'll make a motion that we approve PC Resolution Number, am I on the right one? Yes, 13-09, thank you. Approving Design Review Permit, DRP 12-11, and Conditional Use Permit, CUP 12-05, subject to the findings of approval and conditions of approval.
I'll second that.
Ready for roll call? Foster.
Yes.
Becker.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Nicklin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, now I can say congratulations on the mic, and Nick, if you have any questions on what's needed, you have a great rapport already with Sherri, and if you have any questions for me, you can ask them, but I think the conditions of approval are pretty straightforward. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
All right, so we'll move on to the next section, the information items. Number four, Director Report and Director Actions. I see there's nothing.
Well, there is. So we have the table of recent director-level decisions, and we, just so happened, we didn't have any in the two-week period since your last meeting. Yeah, it's been pretty busy, but I do have other things to report on, and first of all, I want to note, I want to thank the commissioners who participated in the workshop yesterday with the city council. I think that went really well. Staff got excellent direction out of that, and after the workshop, Lawrence gave his communication to the council that is part of the standing agenda item for reports from commissions, and he noted, which I'm glad you did, that there's a desire to meet more frequently between the Planning Commission and the city council, and so the city council was very supportive of that, and they suggested meeting every three or four months with the commission. And, you know, similar format, you'd have an hour at the start, before the start of the regular city council meeting. So that's, we're already tentatively planning when the next couple of meetings will be. So thank you for bringing that up at the regular city council meeting. The other actions of note at this city council meeting was that they did approve on the consent agenda the Angorola wall variance and encroachment permit. I know there was some discussion during the workshop about that, but that's been approved, and we'll be working with Mr. Angorola and Mrs. Schmidt Mayback on their follow-up requirements. They've actually started to satisfy some of the conditions of approval already. The budget discussion that also occurred last night at the city council item, we noted in the staff report, if not in the actual, well, first of all, the budget's available on the city website for all that are interested, and there's also a link to the revisions to the fee schedule that I'd like to just take a moment to go through some of the highlights on that. But the other main items, and I think many of you are aware of this already, we are advertising for an assistant planner position, a part-time assistant planner position, it would be 18 hours a week, so essentially halftime, and that is a reorganization of the department in lieu of filling the building official code enforcement officer on a full-time basis. We're going to maintain the approximately 20 hours per week of services from our consulting firm, Steve Stewart Consulting, to provide the building official plan check, building inspection, and code enforcement services. That's been going very well in the last several months. And Larry Beam, who's the main inspector and the main face of the building division for Ojai, has been received very well by the community. He's an excellent communicator, he's very knowledgeable, he's very, very fair, and I think he's, the contractors that deal with him on a regular basis are impressed. And he's also been a key component of our improved documentation and closure on some of these code enforcement cases. We're able to move those through quickly. So that's working well, the way it's set up right now, and we'll reconsider things in six months' time and see if it's still going well, or if we need to make additional adjustments, but that's a big part of the reorganization for this fiscal year. The council was also supportive of allocating some funding for the neighborhood planning process, and we will be recommending a, I think the dollar amount at this point is $30,000 as part of this next fiscal year to assist with that effort, and I think all of us recognize it's probably not a one-year project, so we'll see how it goes on the first year, and then we'll reassess if additional resources are needed. But that was a big change and a welcome addition, or the council was very eager to recognize that priority of the Planning Commission. What else do I have? I could talk about some of the, well, let me talk about it in the context of the priorities. So the other, they talked about budget, and then they also talked about city priorities, and there was a fair amount of discussion on the community development. And there was a fair amount of discussion on the community development department's priorities, which having the workshop prior to the city council meeting was very helpful. But one of the things that came up, in addition to the neighborhood planning initiative, there was some desire on the city council to take a slightly different approach on some of our code enforcement with respect to two specific things. One is banner signs, and the other was the sandwich boards and the menu boards that are currently require a permit from the planning commission. And I think there's some interest at the city council level to maybe consider a different process for that, or something maybe less onerous. And that, I'm not sure about the timing of that, but that could be as a part of the sign ordinance revisions that this commission has expressed interest in seeking your teeth into once we get through the housing element for cycle five. So that came up. And then with respect to the banner signs, the main issue, as I understand it, is that there are a couple entities in the city that are, that would like to display banners more than 30-day maximum. Right now, you get 30 days, and you get that up to four times a year. And some of the theaters and art center have longer-term exhibits that they want to advertise, or longer-term plays that they want to advertise that go beyond the 30 days. And I think that's easily addressed, even within our current regulations. What I would recommend in that case is have those properties come in for a comprehensive sign program that would give them some flexibility on the duration, but also set some standards on size where the signs to be displayed, so there's some continuity there. So I think that's probably the best way to handle that, if that's the extent of it. If there are other businesses or entities out there that have other issues with banner signs, then I'll have to hear what those are, but that's all I heard last night from the council. So, you know, we're, I think the primary focus is going to be, obviously, the housing element and wrapping up cycle four, implementing the second amnesty program, and then proceeding ahead with the, with the cycle five. I've already circulated a request for proposals to a few housing element consultants, and those are due at the end of this month, and then, or not quite the end of this month, I think they're due on May 28th, and we'll move very quickly in rating those and coming up with a recommendation. And ultimately, the council will be selecting one of those firms to assist with the cycle five. And just a reminder that the main milestones for cycle five are, we ought to be delivering a draft to state HCD sometime in the late summer or very early fall, August, September, that timeframe. And then, and that's going to involve, of course, preparatory to that, it's going to involve workshops before both the planning commission and city council. Probably start with a joint workshop, and then have a planning commission workshop, and then a city council workshop. So I'm envisioning three separate meetings before that draft is submitted to the state HCD. And then they have 60 days to review that and get comments back to the city. And then the city has to consider those comments and can take some, leave some, but the city needs to adopt a housing element, formally adopt it, the cycle five housing element, by basically January of next year. And I'd like to give us a little cushion and try to shoot for the end of the calendar year. The deadline in the statute is October 15th, and, but there's 120-day grace period. And so what that means is that if you're after October 15th, 2013, you're technically out of compliance at that point, but I think HCD is going to be fairly lenient and just let things go as long as we get an element, an adopted element before them within that 120 grace, 120-day grace period, which puts us into, it's really early February, I think it's February 12th, 2014 is the drop dead deadline, but I don't want to push it to the end. So that's the game plan for the housing element consultant, and I think we'll have selection of that. The consultant is tentatively scheduled for the city council's meeting on June 11th, so coming up soon. So that's a lengthy director report to add on to our otherwise short meeting.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number five, current code enforcement activity.
Well, again, progress is, continues on this, and I gave you kind of the, some of the feedback we got from the council last night, but we, how many did we close out this period? Looks like we have one, two, three, four.
Six.
Seven. Looks like seven have been closed out, and only a few new ones have been added. So, you know, the goal is to close out more than come in and ultimately have the list be shorter. And I will say, some of these we're addressing, you know, right from the outset with just a phone call, and people are fairly cooperative. And so that's, that's been a nice change. Sherri, is that your experience too, that seems like?
Last one, first of all.
Okay. But I think we're, I think we're getting better at resolving these really early, really, with limited staff resources, and that's also, I think, a change, and a welcome change.
Yeah, on that note, I talked to, when Rob first came in, I talked about the grievance procedure we used in the healthcare industry, and we kind of did some innovative stuffs there. Because in that industry, you're regulated, it's one of the most regulated industries in the state, and you don't want to have a bunch of grievances because they count, they track them. And if you get too many, then the state goes, well, what's going on here? So what we did is we had a rule, essentially a policy that said, if you can't resolve the issue in the first five minutes of the phone call, it becomes a grievance. So the idea was to resolve the issue. And you trained everyone around resolution and not so much documentation. So that first five minutes was their window to come up with grave solutions to resolve. And anything that takes longer than that, as you can well imagine with what you, the time may be different with people that you have to deal with. Really probably is a grievance, you know, because you can't seem to get anywhere with it. So, but you find when you can solve things over the phone, it's great. It's like, yeah, done deal. So those kinds of creative and ways of handling the situations, I think, work really well, and it can be applied to this kind of deal that we have here in the community.
That was all I had on code enforcement.
Item number six, future agenda items.
One of the, one of the things also that came out of the discussion last night is, you know, again, there's a realization that we have very limited staff. We cannot tackle everything. There's a list of a dozen or more items that just can't be done the next six months, and we want to tackle those that we can and then move on from there. So, and we're going to talk further about priorities during the budget process, but the water-efficient landscape ordinance, the fact that it's already in place, I think, meaning the state regulations, it's state law, it's state statute, we have to be complying. I think that takes some of the pressure off carrying forward the landscape ordinance, but the council did talk about the recognition that there was a lot of effort made, and that if it's close to the finish line, then maybe we should just bring it forward, and if it sails through, then great. But as you all know, there's often opposition that is sometimes mystifying for state-mandated changes that we're just trying to make a little bit better. But at any rate, the, I think it's worth staying on schedule now with a water-efficient landscape, but if it really becomes a drain on staff time, I think we'll have to defer action on that until some of these other priority issues are dealt with.
Just a question, because of course, what I handed in was a draft, and has anyone had the chance to look at it? Okay, well, okay. But what, I guess what I was going to say was, I'll offer, if I needed a meeting to go over it, I would attend that meeting and answer questions.
Yeah, I'd like to keep it.
That helps.
No, I appreciate that, and I'll probably take you up on that, but I want to, I believe it or not, I feel like I'm going to have some availability in the next few weeks to look at this. So I'd like to keep it on as a tentative item on June 19th, and it'll be, it'll be a workshop to, and I think at that point, we'll get a gauge for, is this going to be controversial or not?
For a planning commission meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, that, you know, to me, that's a, it sounds like that would fall into, we've talked about the hour that we could spend every month.
Right, we could actually discuss it. You know, I will say this, it was in the, I think, in the winter of 2010, I think it was February, maybe March, city council actually had come forward and asked us to prioritize it. It was complete streets, the water ordinance, and the lighting ordinance. And that's what initiated that. It was supposed to have been adopted in January of 2010. At that point, we were a couple of months past the due date. But I will say this, you know, and I think this is where the controversy comes. Within that state ordinance, there are a lot of items that said, you shall, which means you must. And we couldn't, you know, you can't change that. But where we had an option, we really went through it with a fine-tooth comb. We actually went to, and got documents from other similar communities that would have like the same climate that we have, basically in Southern California, looked at what they had done, if there was anything that we felt contributed or made things easier, we used that template. And then, basically, you know, the water portion is part of our existing landscape ordinance, and we actually updated the landscape ordinance in certain areas where some of the information was outdated. So, and then I will say this, and I know I've said this before, we painstakingly went through and reorganized the state ordinance, because I will say this, it's, it was a mess because they had design elements, requirements, everything was mixed together, so you couldn't sort it out. You literally would have to just keep combing through it to try to figure out, where do I start, what do I do next? I mean, it really, you know, after you do it several times, you become more familiar. But once again, as we've discussed, we have all these codes and ordinances, what have you, that are just so laborious and hard to understand. So we sorted it out to make it more user-friendly, and we created checklists. And the checklist would make it easier for the applicant and the, either the landscape architect or the architect who's performing the work. It would also make it easy for staff when somebody comes in and says, you know, what do I need to do here? You know, I'm commercial or I'm residential, everything's broken down in tiers. And then it also makes it easier for the building inspector, when he comes out and you've got to sign off a project, there's the checklist. So, anyway, I just had to put a plug in. But just to say, our intention was to make it easier and more understandable.
If we do that on the 9th, is it possible we can get that draft a couple of weeks before, or right away? Because that's something, if we get on a Thursday, it'd be tough to, to really have time to review it.
Yeah, we can try to get it out earlier, even if it's a separate thing that we could email to all the commissioners. So that's, that's one of the items I want to try to stay, you know, hopefully, it's well-received. I know that the effort that Kathy and Tom Bostrum put into it are, was a lot, and really did address a confusing, confusingly-written state model ordinance. The, we have a couple pending projects that may be ready on June 5th that are listed there. There's a CUP modification for the Ojai Vineyard, and then there's a two-story addition on Emily Street. And they're, yeah, they're likely to be ready for June 5th. And then there's another project that may, it may also be ready for that, that meeting. So even though it's blank right now on June 5th, we'll probably have at least two items on that agenda. And then I do want to note that the Wednesday before July 4th, when I think there's some festivities in town, at this point, I'm leaning towards recommending canceling that. If something really pressing comes up between now and, and the end of June, or the mid, middle of June, then we'll, we can reconsider that. But does any, any of you have, know at this point that you'll be out of town for that?
I'm going to be.
Oh, sorry, I'm going to be out of town.
Yeah, I'm going to be out of town too.
It looks like it's going to be the 11th of June through the 20th or 21st.
So you missed that June 19th.
I'd miss that June 19th. That's why, if I can get it early, I can at least get some comments back. So you have them for the meeting.
Okay, so, and you're comfortable with having the commission proceed with that and
you being able to provide some comments?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, whatever you convey to me prior to the meeting, I can, I can make as part of my staff presentation.
Okay.
So when we have it on the radar, we'll put it on the radar. So the chair also indicated you're going to be out on July 3rd, or are you going to be out?
There's a possibility that we're going to be out away for a couple of days, yeah.
Okay. All right, but not in June?
Not in June.
Okay. Anybody else?
I may be gone, and I may also miss, I'm not sure what our mid-July date is, but I may be out on that one.
It'll be July 17th.
Oh, July 17th, yeah, I may miss that one.
Okay. All right, well, we'll, that's quite some time away. So, you know, it's, we're steadily busy, and we're, until we have additional help with another person, we're, we're getting really good service from RingCon consultants. Josh Janowitz is the contract planner, and he's been, so far, he's been excellent. He's been really efficient, he's been very professional, very good with applicants, so that's going well in the interim.
Thank you. Item number seven, planning commission subcommittee report.
I'll just give a brief one. Basically, last meeting, I announced that Complete Streets, the Complete Streets Subcommittee will begin meeting again on a regular basis, starting Wednesday, June 5th, from 3:00 to 4:30 here at City Hall. We're open to the public. As a matter of fact, I invite any members of the public to come and partake and help us with this Complete Streets endeavor. And we will be meeting, that's the first Wednesday of the month, on a monthly basis. And this month, we're actually collaborating with the Public Works Department. Greg Grant, our director, has actually put an agenda together, and I spoke to him today, and I said, Greg, I'm going to introduce the meeting, and I'm going to hand it over to you, and let him do it. He was very excited. And I'm excited too, because he has a lot of improvements in the city, some grants that are coming up, and they all have Complete Streets applications, so we're going to be looking at those. So I invite, once again, invite everyone to come join us. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our city council liaison, Sarah.
Good evening, commissioners, staff. Just like to appreciate the comments and the recommendations you guys made yesterday at joint meeting. I think it went really well. I think the council, just in general, appreciates your work. And more than anything, I know we're, we're kind of, and just to elaborate what Rob said about different ideas of how to handle differences when a staff member makes a determination, how are we going to fix it? What's a better way of resolving it? Are we doing our fees? I think that's, everything, all that's good, but what I really want to focus on is what you guys suggested with doing districts. I think, and looking at the codes and some ordinances that are troublesome, I think that's going to alleviate the majority of the problems. And I, as we move forward, the council yesterday was talking about, okay, where is the priorities going to be, and how much money is it going to be? And I know it's impossible with our size amount of staff to tackle that. So we're looking for innovative, creative ways that we could really focus our energy. It's not just going to be 2013, it's just going to be an ongoing process. So when something comes up, we could look at it, and it could be a living document instead of just setting it on the, on the shelf and making dust, and then just taking it down when a problem arises. I think we're looking for more productivity. And it's, again, going back to the fines, your recommendations about, is this a fair fine to put on this line item? So I look forward, and I really am in support about meeting three, four times a year. I think that's good. I think you guys do so much work. I'd, I'd hopefully be more efficient, and the meetings will be less, less time as we go on. But I think it is still important to keep that communication open. And I don't know if you guys have any questions. And I don't know if you guys have any questions?
I just wanted to say thank you and the city council. I thought it was a great meeting last night.
Great evening.
And I look forward to our, you know, three to four meetings a year and working together collaboratively.
Well, thank you. Thanks. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that actually reminds me, and thank you, Councilmember Lara, for triggering my memory. I forgot to report on the outcome of the informal appeal process. What, how do I summarize this? So the direction from the council was, was threefold. It was definitely have a no-cost appeal to the city manager, which quite frankly happens routinely anyway. But, but rec, you know, the word, get the word out that that's a, that's a possibility, which again, I think we do regularly anyway. Then they did want to establish sooner rather than later. They didn't want to wait for the 2013 building code update, but to establish the building board of appeals for building code interpretations and issues, start that sooner rather than later. So I think that's actually coming to council as an ordinance in June. And then the third direction was have a, the informal appeal beyond the city manager, it no longer is informal because it would be a standing committee of the council and that would create Brown Act noticing requirements and, and it sort of defeats the, the whole concept of an informal process. So that was, the informal appeal can go to the city manager and then beyond that, the thought was have a lower cost application for applicants that want to appeal a, in this case, a city staff, both community development director and city manager decision to the planning commission. Because you are the appeal body for the zoning code interpretations. And the, right now, there's a $160 core fee and then a $1,000 deposit to appeal something to the planning commission. That's a big stumbling block for a lot of applicants. The thought was reduce that fee to a set fee of $500. And if the appellant is, prevails, if the planning commission overturns the staff determination, then that fee would be refunded to the applicant. So I think that's a really fair way to go and it should allow, it should take some of the, some of the stumbling block away from appealing things to the planning commission. And then beyond that, they can, they're free to appeal the planning commission decision to the council. And we are also recommending dropping the deposit for a appeal to the council by about 20% or $200 so that the, if somebody wants to appeal a planning commission decision to the city council, instead of an initial $1,160 hit, it's going to be a $960 deposit-based process. So those were, that was a good, healthy discussion and I think that's, I think that'll, that'll help. And the other thing I will say is that we are trying to be, at the staff level, we're trying to understand the, or see things from a little bit broader perspective within our purview and, and look at often, make sure that we're considering the spirit of the regulations, in addition to letter the regulations. So I think that's also avoiding some of the disagreements between applicants and staff. I think we've already had a fair amount of success in that, just the last four or five weeks. And then we've, we are, when I, I pointed out that we have the, the budget on the webpage and we also have the fee schedule on the webpage. Take, take a moment, if you, if you would, to look at the community development fees because we are reducing several of those to make it less of a disincentive for the applicants. And I'm not going to go through all the changes right now, but I want to note that one of the, a couple of the key changes. So we have a minor design review fee now that still brings projects to the planning commission, but if it's a small project, like perhaps the two-story addition that we looked at today, that would be a $450 set fee, not a deposit base. And so people have certainty as what the, what the upper limit is. And we do want to, well, I won't get into the details, but there's a set fee for that. There's major changes to the sign fees. We have, as we already discussed, changes to a reduced fee for sign plan modifications if they're, if they're minor revision, that's a $250 set fee, no longer the thousand-plus major modification fee. The landmark signs in the arcade, we're, on the books right now, it's an $800 deposit and a $90 core fee and that's a huge expense for the cost of a sign in relation to the cost of the sign. So we're actually recommending, ratcheting that down to a set fee of $180, but still bringing it to the HPC. And, you know, there may be some costs that the city is eating there, but the thought is that the city, community gets the benefit because they're protecting historic preservation. So there, there's some rationale for having the city bear some of that cost. There's, there's a, this, there's, it's in our, in the schedule that you see online, it looks like we're increasing or recommending increasing the regular sign permits and the banner permit fees. We're not, we're going to leave them where they are, so we'll make that clear with the council. So I don't want, if any of you get calls, well, why are the sign permits going up? They're, they're not. We're keeping sign permits, banner, sign permits, the same fee. And I think that's some of the highlights. We've reduced a lot of the other ones, variances, minor variance, zone changes, some of these other ones have just come down in the initial deposit. But I think the major changes are the appeal process, the, the sign permits fees and the design review. Oh, the last design review change, and this is one that you'll appreciate, the, so the director exemptions have been deposit-based and it's been a $90 set fee and a $200 deposit. Usually we resolve those in an hour or two at the most, and so we're recommending making that a set fee of $120. So these are pretty significant changes to most of our more common applications and I think that'll go a lot towards addressing some of the concerns on the cost of our permit fees. That said, I will also, I think it's a good idea to keep in mind that I think our fee schedule and our turnaround times are lower and quicker than just about any other jurisdiction in the area. And Randy Haney had some comments to that effect last, last night, that, you know, he is, is working in other jurisdictions, gosh, it's so much quicker, you know, clearer, less of a hassle in Ojai. And I think that's the experience with the vast majority of the people that come into the counter. Although I know that you and the council sometimes hear about the, the small vocal minority that has a different perspective. But anyway, I'll wrap it up then. Kept it under an hour.
Just, this is a bit of a digression, Rob, but, you know, over the last couple of years, we've been providing the pre-concept design consultation, if you would. Is there any conflict in doing that as we've been doing? Is that something that we're going to continue to provide the public as a service?
Oh, in, in terms of the informal review at your level?
Right, if someone comes in with a design issue and they may have ideas on it and they want, before they go into the formal process, we've been providing them some feedback. One or two of us on the commission, not necessarily the same people all the time.
Yeah.
There's no conflict there, I'm assuming?
No.
No conflict, we're going to continue with that process.
I, I see that as just advising staff on what, what often are staff level determinations and, and I may pick any one of, one or two of you, depending on the circumstances. So, so that's, that's sort of a, that's, that's a part of your role as planning commissioners to, and my role as the, as the department director is to be able to bounce ideas off, off you occasionally and get some input. So we'll continue.
And with applicants as well.
Mm-hmm.
Correct, yeah.
Yep.
Was that a, adjourn the meeting?